RFP two one zero zero three, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're good.
Chairman, just so you're aware, right now we're having, and you want, can continue the meeting, but we're not live streaming, there's a hiccup, so I don't know if you want to wait in livestream since these generally do get livestreamed or proceed, I just wanted you to be aware that there is a, so.
Thank you.
Thanks Bob.
Thanks Bob.
You're welcome.
So, uh, what's the wishes of the board, we can recess while IT guy fixes it, or we can proceed?
I'm okay with proceeding.
I think we can proceed.
Okay, we're going to proceed. Uh, new business. Uh, resolution number twenty-six hundred two six zero zero, resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue from the juvenile court services department. I'm going to open the public hearing.
So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions of Director Burnt? Don't, are there any questions? Uh, hearing now, I'm going to now close the public hearing. Is there discussion from the board?
No discussion.
I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll go ahead then, Mr. Chair, and I move to approve the resolution number two six zero zero, listed on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. And now, before, provisional exemptions, recommended, uh, denial Idaho Fish and Game Wildlife Service, I'm going to open the public hearing on provisional exemptions for Idaho Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Is there anyone who'd like to provide testimony? Is there anyone here for testimony to, to speak to it? I guess not. I am now going to close the public hearing, is there any discussion from the board?
I guess, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a recommendation, I've read everything and I believe that, um, I'm wanting to recommend denial for this, um, because it does not qualify under the existing code, so with that, I would move to deny, um, the recommended, uh, the provisional exemption for Idaho Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and I don't know if I need to read the parcel number, but it's S one zero one four two one two seven three zero.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Ooh, let's see, close the, close the, we already closed the public hearing. Okay, uh, we have now licenses to discuss.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, can I inquire if we are back on YouTube?
Yes.
Been back, back in a few minutes.
You said we'll be back in a few minutes?
We have been back.
We're all, we're all, we're going.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, the license for ratifications, are there any questions?
I have no questions, Chair.
Any questions?
Request that we discuss them separately.
Okay, we'll discuss them separately, we're discussing SOFRA first.
No questions, Mr. Chair?
Any questions?
No.
Uh, okay, I'll entertain a motion to, to, uh, to approve SOFRA. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead, Mr. Chair, move to ratify and approve the, the one license, it's listed on the agenda, SOFRA and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move and seconded, any, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're talking about, uh, license number two, Ranch Club, uh, three five four four ten Boulevard. Any, is there, uh, a motion?
I think Ryan wanted to discuss this one, didn't you?
Yeah, I, maybe before we make a motion, I, um, just wanted to say a couple of words on this one, so, and, and I, I don't suppose anyone from the Ranch Club is, is here to discuss this, so, this may or may not be the right time, but I wanted to bring it up. Um, recent story in the Idaho State Smith, uh, about the Ranch Club, so, for those of you who don't know, Ranch Club has been, uh, something of an institution in Idaho and certainly in Garden City, which is, uh, my town, uh, it's been in business for approximately seventy-one years under the name Ranch Club. Um, the, uh, current story in the Idaho State Smith says that the, um, new leases are going to be changing the name, and, uh, for those of you who, who know, there is a historic Ranch Club sign that, uh, has occupied the corner of, of Chindon and, uh, Orchard for, I guess, since the, uh, the building has been in existence, and it's the one that has the well-known horse statue with the, with the Ranch Club underneath. Um, I don't think we have any, uh, uh, ordinances that, that cover historic names of buildings, per se, in our, in our code, but I think it, it may be a matter of, of community interest, um, that to keep the name Ranch Club. Uh, now, I don't know if, if, you know, we can use the, the, this license transfer as, as any, you know, I, I don't know if there's any legal authority to deny this based on wanting to talk to the, um, the owner of the building and, and possibly the new renter about whether or not they'd be willing to, to keep the name Ranch Club, or if not, if they'd be willing to, um, pres, uh, at least offer the county or Garden City an offer to, uh, buy some of the historic aspects of the building that could be preserved in the, uh, Idaho History Museum, or anything along those lines. Um, but again, it's, they've, they've stated their name is no longer going to be the Ranch Club, and then it says license transf, transfer Ranch Club, so, I would just maybe inquire, um, legal or with the clerk, is, if we have any grounds, if, if we're able to table this before we could speak to, um, the owner of the building, if there's any grounds to do that legally, or if we have no grounds but to, uh, approve.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, in terms of what you have before you, so I'm not offering legal advice, but just in the, right now, this is just a transfer of ownership in terms of the license holder for the existing facility, maintaining the name Ranch Club, at least at this point in time, that's not changing here in terms of this license, so, I, I think you can easily engage with the owners in terms of the broader issues you send, but I think the conditions have been met that the license ought to be granted, and it's worth noting on the beer, wine, and liquor licenses, um, before they arrive at ours, they've been approved at the state level, right, and then subsequently, they'll have to, after getting approval from us, we'll have to submit to Garden City, so I can understand the broader context you're talking about, but here, my recommendation would be that you approve the existing license.
Okay.
Pardon me, commissioners, this is Heather Luther with the recorder's office, I do just want to, um, point out that this has already been signed and the license has been delivered to the business, um, it's on the agenda as a ratification, so it was signed on the fifteenth of January.
Well, that being said, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, uh, agree to, to vote for this, but I guess I'm just bringing it to the public's attention since, uh, it is, it is a matter of some community interest, I think, to preserve some of the historic aspects of the county, um, even if it's private businesses, um, so, uh, with that, I guess I'll, I'll yield back the floor.
I might add that, uh, from that article you mentioned, I read they're going to keep the horse on top of the building.
I did see that, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to ratify and approve the license for the Ranch Club, it's listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion, further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, thank you very much. Corks Office.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGrane.
Yeah, we've, uh, certainly been delayed by technology, I don't have much of an update, I'm being, been actively engaged, uh, with the legislature, a lot of conversations, I mean, on a lot of issues, we can talk more broadly, but elections, uh, the elections integrity stuff, which you're familiar with, seems to be trickling up to the top at the moment, I'm meeting with Secretary Denny later today, I just talk about things, um, but there seems to be a lot going on over at the legislature, and doing our best to follow up, um, this afternoon, there is a legislative update with District Three, which is where I sit on the legislative committee for the IAC, so we'll just be giving an update, a lot of stuff that I think you're already familiar with, but just an update for the, the district.
What are the election issues that are, that have been brought up, I mean, I've been bragging about how great of elections we have in Ada County.
Yeah, no, uh, well, there's a, there's a few, one of the things I'm pushing strongly for is to, uh, make the changes that were done in the special session permanent, really, that was one of our biggest successes, was those changes, they expired on December thirty-first, and so trying to make those permanent, and then there's other clarity things that have come up, um, things like we had discussed ballot harvesting, we don't have statutes related to that, clarity on the follow-up that we do with absentee ballots, um, and some other, but also just, I think the topic because of this election is in the air, doesn't mean that changes will necessarily come, but people are, uh, elections has taken the heightened interest during this session.
Well, uh, uh, does not that change that expired is one thing that allowed you to, to your office to actually disclose the results on election day?
Had we not had those changes, we would have been, been days later, yeah, so it's well worth, I think, a number of things were very successful about that, so, and hopefully, I believe most of the legislature feels the same, so.
Well, that's good, I thought, I thought that was one of the, the better, uh, aspects, I mean, uh, all the, the, the various changes, but that was a good one.
I think it's one that Idaho should be proud of, for sure.
Absolutely. All right, and you don't have anything else to?
No, we're preparing, we do have a March election, I think it may be, Kuna School District.
Kuna School District.
Very quiet, I think we have eight absentee ballot requests so far.
That's a change.
It's the polar opposite of what we've had last year.
Will you need to hire any temporary staff?
Uh, not for this at the moment.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, uh, thank you Phil. Uh, moving on to the claims journal, I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the claims, uh, the claims journal dated January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a second?
All second.
Move and second, is there discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we're going to pay the claims journal. Next, the personnel actions forums, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the personnel action, uh, actions listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain in file in Commissioner's office.
Is there a second?
Second.
You've heard the motion, move and second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Mr. McQuade, um, do you have any updates? Can't hear you. I can't hear him, can anybody else hear?
He's muted.
Is that better?
There you go.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you so much for approving use of the contingency funds yesterday, we've already started making use of those, and also, Phil, thank you for your help, and, uh, and Kathy Graves for that, we have four temporaries, uh, working this morning out at the different shops, managing the lines, and, uh, we, it, have overtime, a lot of overtime, uh, being ramped up right now, uh, it's because we're working on getting the mail out. Uh, Commissioner, uh, back you had talked about a, a sign, perhaps just, uh, informing the, the users of our services as to why there's the, the delay, Elizabeth Duncan has prepared a sign, it's really, really, uh, very nice, well done, and those will most likely be posted today. Uh, tomorrow, we're going to start something that, uh, we've talked about you doing, we've had problems implementing it, but that is a process where the users can, uh, come up to the door, give us the cell phone number, and then go back and wait in their cars, and that way they won't be standing out in the elements, we had tried something like that before out in Starr, uh, it was a real failure, Canyon County is, has one that's going today that seems to be successful, but they started out having a failure, the reason they're able to do that is the software that they have permits them to do that, to have someone check in, and then go back and wait, and be notified by text, but we're going to work on a process to get that, uh, put in place. The last comment I want to make this morning is we have some tax cancellations coming up, and I just want to just review what tax cancellations are, first of all, uh, they aren't taking all of the taxes off, it's just usually a fractional amount, and you're going to, this is just going to be as, uh, uh, such a common occurrence as the claims journal, you'll probably see this on a weekly basis, is what this is, is when an error comes to our attention, this is how we correct that error, if the error occurs prior to, uh, the Board of Equalization, we just do a simple corrective notice, and we just send that out, and that's all there is to it, once the Board of Equalization is in session, though, then any adjustments have to come through the Board of Equalization, so if we realize there's been a mistake, we'll send the square footage or something, we will send that over, uh, to you, you would make the change at the Board of Equalization, but what, Board of Equalization adjourns, then it has to be done through a tax cancellation, and so that's what we're talking about today, you're going to be talking about in just a minute, some tax cancellations, and, uh, I'm, I'm looking at one here, uh, we had it in as an unfinished, uh, unfinished remodel, as it turns out, the model was not complete, uh, as of the, the first of the year, we thought it was, it was not, so we are putting that back to the way it should have been, uh, there's a homeowner's exemption error, uh, we've got to process a homeowner's exemption while we're, uh, performing a, uh, it was a multi-faceted transaction, and part of it was a homeowner's exemption, so that's what these tax cancellations are, these are all on the primary roll, and they're just a fraction of the, the assessed value, it's not the entire amount, now, I hope that clarifies what tax cancellations are, again, you will be seeing them, uh, on a regular basis, Mr. Chairman, those are all my comments this morning.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McQuade, thank you, thank you for that, uh, do we have a motion on tax cancellations?
Uh, just a question first, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, good morning Bob, how are you?
Good morning Ken, you're doing well, thank you.
Good, and Boise Caddis, is that ours?
Uh, so which one is that?
Caddis, Boise Caddis.
Oh, oh, yes, uh, yes, that is, uh, the Ada County has a fractional interest in that, and this is, uh, recognizing that fractional interest.
Okay, and it was, it's not occupied yet, so that's maybe what, what that is, okay?
It is, yes, it's just a, a forty-eight, taking forty-eight thousand dollars of value off.
All right, with that, um, I'm, I move to approve the tax cancellations, it's listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Or is there further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you Bob. Treasurer, you're up.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning, Beth.
Good morning.
Good morning, and so before you, for consideration today is a waiver, or a request for a waiver of late charge and interest, and so this relates to a property tax payment that was due by December twenty-second, that was not timely received by our office, and as we've discussed, by statute, the treasurer's office is required to charge a two percent late charge, and then for interest to accrue, uh, we don't have discretion over that, um, it's just a, a matter of law, um, and, and I will just note that we've gone to great lengths this year to help inform taxpayers of the amounts owing and their payment options, uh, we've been fully staffed to answer questions as taxpayers call for their amounts owing, we installed a Dropbox to help provide additional payment opportunities for those taxpayers, um, and in, in very limited circumstances, um, the treasurer's office does not have the discretion, but you do, to waive the late charge and interest in the circumstance that there was an error by the county, um, and this appears to be one of those cases, um, had to do with ownership changes and the timing, and, um, the sheer volume of real estate transactions being recorded that, uh, that the ownership was not properly updated on this parcel, so, i- in this case, I would, I, this is one of the rare circumstances, is what I'm trying to say, that, um...
That it's our fault.
Yes, well, or that, um, this late charge and interest should be considered to be waived.
So, you, you don't have the capability to waive it, but we do, under the law.
That is correct, yes.
All right, that doesn't sound like it's going to be that much damage.
Um, Mr. Chair, the amount of issues is just over fifty-seven dollars.
Right, right, well. Is there a motion, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just, to add on to the, it was, uh, the relationship between our offices, us keeping up the recording, the volume of recordings, so, so there's a, a timing issue between our two offices with those last minute changes that contributed to this error, so I support, uh, the waiver.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, is there, uh, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the waiver of late charges and interest for the twenty-twenty property realist, on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Well, I think any time I can vote to waive a fee for a citizen, I think it's a good day.
Well, particularly when it's our fault.
Well, and sometimes with this growth, we, it's just impossible to keep up, uh, overstaffing, so.
I think we're very lucky, we won't have this one.
It's imbalance, oh, it's not the last one you'll see.
It won't be the last one, but for now, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. May I have a motion on the minutes?
Want to go ahead, Ryan, on this one?
I can do it, um, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there discussion?
No, sir.
No discussion, uh, you've heard the, uh, the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, Parks and Water Race, Scott is with us this morning to review the events at Barber Park for March and April, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, well, thank you for your consideration of item eleven A on the agenda today, this is a review of March and April events for twenty-twenty-one, and what this is, is an item we've been bringing regularly to the board for consideration and input, uh, typically what we've been doing is preemptively canceling events, uh, just to keep in line with the COVID restrictions and the governor's current order for social gatherings, so, right now, we have eleven booked events for March and April, uh, we have canceled events throughout the course of this pandemic, um, those eleven events, nine of those are weddings, most of those are, they're, they're sixty-five, um, people and more, they tend to be, uh, typically about two hundred to two hundred and fifty people, the current stage two order that we're under, that was passed by the governor in December, uh, limits social gatherings to ten people or less, and so these are a bit different than, say, events at Expo, where they're a little bit more online with like a, a gathering that's related to a business or a conference type of event, these are basically the definition of a social gathering, where people are hugging, dancing, sharing food, and those kinds of things, so, I bring it to your attention for consideration, um, what this does if you do consider cancellation of these events, it allows us to, to provide a, uh, full refund to all of these folks that have currently rented the Barber Park Education and Event Center, so with that, I just kind of bring it back to you and, and, uh, see what you would like to do, um, in terms of those events that we currently have booked for March and April.
Okay, Scott, I do have a question for you, uh, for March and April, assuming that there is a change in the governor's order, would you be able to get these events back online?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, no.
If they want them.
Mr. Chair, typically, no, uh, we would not be able to get those back online, the reason being is just the, the duration of the contracting process, uh, it, it would really depend on the timing, I suppose, uh, if someone were to contact us, um, you know, at the middle of March, and the situation changed with the pandemic, and the current order, uh, to allow for gatherings to occur, say, in April, uh, we could potentially quickly organize the contracting side of things, but more often than not, what happens is because these are large social events with, you know, that have been booked up to a year in advance, large weddings with event planners and things of that nature, they tend to need a lot of lead time to organize and make this event happen, so, it's unlikely, I should say, that they would be, uh, that they would book again in March or April, we do allow for them to book beyond that threshold, so when we cancel, we provide them with a written letter indicating their full refund and the cancellation, and then we offer the opportunity to book beyond that, the current cancellation threshold, um, with another understanding that we, we're not in control of the pandemic, and we could cancel those again.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Scott, have you spoken to all the applicants and asked if they want to, want a refund and cancel, and if so, what was their response?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, each of these eleven events, uh, we have had, uh, contact with them and communications with them, at this point, um, what's been consistent about all of these events, uh, for the most part since March, when we began, when we began these cancellations, excuse me, is folks kind of hang on and hang on and understand that, uh, we could cancel, they could cancel, um, these events in particular, uh, that they're not, they're hopeful that they can have their event, but they understand if we cancel, that the benefit to us canceling versus them canceling is our contract, um, does not allow for a refund for them if they cancel, uh, the clauses that we built in the contract with COVID now allow for us to cancel, and then, like I said, refund that money to them, so, it, it tends to benefit these wedding parties, they can go somewhere else perhaps, or have maybe a, a smaller gathering, um, in another location, so, I hope that answered your question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Scott, I mean, for the duration of the governor's order, you know, should we not put in a clause to allow individuals to cancel?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we did consider that, and I, I believe we did integrate a, a clause in that contract for newly signed contracts, um, those that weren't already ratified by the board, there was a clause inserted, and it did, um, reference the COVID cancellation policy, um, which is beyond what's, what's the force majeure clause that does allow for cancellation under acts of God as well, so, I believe anybody that has booked during this pandemic, once we did modify that contract, now does have that ability to be refunded on their cancellation.
Mr. Chair, and, um, just out of curiosity, Scott, do these people, uh, communicate any kind of contingency plans they have, I'm curious if they're going to Canyon County?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, you know, that's a great question, some, yes, in fact, they do go to Canyon County and have their weddings, others, you know, they, they've had really small events where it's just really the couple, and maybe a pastor that marries, and possibly, you know, the parents, and so they keep it under ten for a social gathering, and they do them in kind of more private settings from what I've seen and, and what people have communicated to us, but yes, some in fact have gone outside of, um, you know, the southwest, or from central district health, the southwest district health jurisdiction, to have those events as well, uh, that has, that has been made aware to us, on occasion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, Scott, what was the, there were two events on here that were not weddings, can you remind, refresh my memory, there was one that I thought perhaps we could get them organized so they could still pull it off?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Canyon, one of those is a, is a brunch for a hundred and fifty to two hundred people, and the other one is actually a seventieth birthday party that is, um, currently projected to be two hundred and fifty people.
Oh, okay, yeah, never mind.
Okay. Is there further discussion with Scott?
Well, I think he needs a recommendation from the board.
May I have a motion on the two events that are agreements listed on the agenda?
Well, I think they're two different things, Chair.
Okay.
I think he's got the eleven events right now that he needs direction from us first, and then there's two events that are, uh, scheduled till nine twenty-one and twelve twenty-one, so I would, um, make a motion to approve those two events, um, but I, I think we need to have a thorough discussion on what to do with the... Um, but I, I think we need to have a thorough discussion on what to do with the twelve that he just presented to us, or the eleven.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Canyon, yes, that, yes, currently on the table is, is, I'm looking for your recommendation. We, like I said, this has been a regular course of business to bring these to the board for consideration, just so we're in front of it. We'll, we'll do this about every month as long as we're still under an active order, um, that limits the size of gatherings. And then as Commissioner Canyon pointed out, there are a couple of events that, that are requesting to book well beyond that horizon line for cancellation right now. So kind of two separate items there.
Okay, so, uh, you need direction on the March and April, uh, uh, events and you need authorization on the, uh, September and December events, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I would, I would ask, okay, is there, how do we get it done for March and April? I mean, what's, you have any thoughts, Scott, on how this could be done under the current situation?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, just to clarify, are you asking how might we have those events?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, you know, we've, we've made some attempts, um, basically placing the emphasis in the past with some of these wedding parties to see if they had an alternate plan that we could then route through Central District Health for consideration. We had one party that didn't submit a plan, um, but it was when the gathering side had bumped in that fifty, uh, threshold range in terms of the Idaho rebounds and governor's order. And so it, it still didn't, right when they were, were proposing that, we, we went back into stage two, their event would have fallen under stage two, which is limiting, uh, social gatherings and weddings specifically are called out in that order as ten people or fewer. So, you know, the, the question is, you know, I, I, I can't answer that question, how do we do it? Uh, we'd love to be hosting events, traditionally we host a hundred and thirty events here at the Education Event Center. We haven't lost quite the amount of revenue that Bob Batista loses at Expo for his events that are much bigger events with much bigger revenue. But for instance, in fiscal year twenty, we lost about thirty three thousand dollars in revenue, not a huge amount. Combines the bookings and alcohol rental, or alcohol, um, revenue share. And then in this year, we're projected to lose eighty to a hundred thousand dollars probably in fiscal year twenty one, depending on if we're able to ramp events up, you know, sometime late spring or, or summer into the end of the fiscal year. So the, the positive side, not to get too deep in the weeds, the positive side is we have other revenue streams, including the Boise River Float season that are surpassed and have exceeded our revenue projections. And so we're able to still bring in more money than we, we shortfalled on our revenue stream. The short answer to your question is how do we do these events? Frankly speaking, I do not think they're possible to host social events and, and also be compliant with the current order.
So Chair, with that, I would recommend that we, um, give, uh, Director Coburg direction to go ahead and cancel those events, um, for March and April and continue to work really closely with all of, um, the folks that want to have events out there to make sure that, um, if there are creative ways, we can accommodate them and get a thumbs up from Central District Health, um, to go ahead and continue to try to do that.
Okay. Do you have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All right, is there discussion?
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm wondering, could there be, uh, an appeal or another request to Central District Health, uh, for reconsideration, from new input? Or would that be fruitless?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, I suppose that's entirely at the behest of, you know, the board. Um, you know, we, we certainly could do that, but I think that's, that's a discussion that might be, um, best suited for the board accounting commissioners. I'd be happy to reach out to see if, if he has some input, Russ in particular has some more input. But traditionally what's been happening is, you know, we are the very definition, the, the events we tend to have are the very definition of social gatherings of significant size out here.
Well, Scott, could you just monitor that, uh, along with the governor's order and, 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 and just keep in touch with, uh, with the director at Central District Health and, and see if there's any way that, uh, that will open up a little bit? Because I get the impression that this stuff's on, on the decline in Ada County anyway. And just, 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 uh, monitor the situation and report back.
I sure will, Mr. Chair, and I would expect to put another, you know, what, whether it's to talk about cancellations or just to talk about this topic. If it's okay, I'll request inclusion on an agenda in about a month at another open business meeting, we can talk about it.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on the two events?
Sure, Mr. Chair, um, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move and seconded, is there, is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
You didn't vote on the original, the first motion regarding the cancellation of events?
I thought you did.
You had it motioned in a second, but you never actually.
Okay, excuse me, back up. We have a motion and a second, uh, to authorize the cancellation of those two events. Is there a further discussion?
No, sir, I don't think there needed to be a motion, just a recommendation, but that's all right, I'll go ahead and second it and make the motion to direct Scott to do what we just stated we would want him to do.
Okay. We need a, uh, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize Scott to do what he needs to do. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make another motion, I, I'd like to move that we, um, communicate to the Ada County members of the Central District Health just the, you know, the situation that we're in with, with Barber Park and, um, what some of our concerns are and, and ask that they give it a thorough look. Um, again, the Canyon County seems to have ways of getting what they want done under the current order. So I would ask that, uh, we move to send a resolution to our Ada County representatives to, um, to bring this stuff to their attention.
Well, we don't have a resolution before us, uh, I, I suppose we could, uh, communicate, uh, we've asked Scott to, to do that, to communicate, uh, to, to, uh, Central District Health. So I'm not quite clear on what your motion is.
Well, I think something that came from the commission itself might, uh, put an extra degree of urgency to the situation.
Okay, well, I wouldn't have a problem with that, just to notify them that we're, we've, we've made a reconsideration or something of the previous order or something, is that what you're talking?
Maybe reexamination of their policies in light of the currently evolving situation with the pandemic and our, our own fiscal issues that we're suffering with here.
Mr. Chairman, just to help us, if, uh, I might recommend if you were wanting to consider something like that, Commissioner Davidson, you might request either Elizabeth or legal, depending on what you feel is appropriate, to just prepare a letter or something else that you can all review so that you're, you're collectively deciding on whatever that final byproduct is. I mean, I think you can give direction at this point and then, uh, then take it up later to actually transmit whatever communication you're wanting to do.
I, I wouldn't have any problem with that, if we get legal or, and, and or Elizabeth to prepare a letter, you can work with them on what you'd like to have written in the letter, then we can all discuss it, correct?
In that case, I'll withdraw my motion and work with staff on a letter.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, did we approve the two, the two, uh, uh, events?
Not yet.
Okay, may I have a motion to, uh, on the two events? Listed on the agenda.
I thought we did the two events.
Clerk says we did.
Commissioner, can you made a motion?
I made the motion, I guess, okay, so I made the motion.
And then we skipped back up?
We just kind of tripped over ourselves a little bit in there.
We've done some, we, okay.
So I made the motion to approve those two, the one in September and December.
Yes.
And I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the two events, is there discussion? Hearing the discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We now have, uh, there's an agreement that we need to look at with, uh, agreement number one four one two eight, personal services agreement between Ada County and Romeo Entertainment Group for comprehensive grandstand entertainment services. Is anyone here talk to that, oh, there we go, Bob?
Fun business.
Yeah.
So we have a contract, this is our talent wire for our grandstand acts, um, this agreement has been modified. Um, last year they booked our five acts, but we never got off the ground. And so half of what their money is, is for booking the events, the other half of the money goes to making sure that the event gets off without any hitches. So this agreement has been modified, uh, we're only paying them half the salary because they completed the first half. And now when we get the, excuse me, the fair going, we will then pay them the second half this coming year.
Okay.
Pretty much it.
That's.
I have, I would like to have some interjection, if I may, concerning some of the stuff that you talked to Mr. Coburg about.
Okay, sure, you're here.
Um, you know, I think this letter, Commissioner Davidson, which should include us as an enterprise fund, we've lost almost a million dollars out there. You've received a letter from, uh, Treasure Valley, uh, RV dealers, they want to do a show out there. This goes back to those, uh, Canyon County and Southwest District Health allowing events like the gun show and the RV, I mean, the, the, um, wrestling tournament, and then they had a spa show. I believe we can work with Central District Health, we did it with the Home and Garden Show about two months ago, that we can take the approach, that we can do this as a retail like Costco, like, uh, Home Depot, like the mall where people come in, we can implement the mask mandate and this can get done. How we get to this point is a, the situation that I'm not sure we, how we do this, but it's being done in the Southwest District Health where apparently they're giving them the event, they, they're not approving it, but they're giving them guidelines to go forward and make it as safe as possible. We are certainly capable of doing that. If we lose these next shows, the three big ones in March, we're really going to be in dire straits of trying to make it work. As an enterprise fund, we don't get the taxpayer dollars that come around every year. We are stuck with what we get, what we make, and right now, if we don't get some business back, this is going to be a long haul.
Oh, great, well, uh, cause I would then just ask, ask if you could, uh, work with Commissioner Davidson in preparation of that letter that we're.
I'd love to do that, Commissioner Beck.
So we'd, we would have, fill it in both for the, for the park recreation and for your enterprise fund. Would, would, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be excellent.
What we're finding out is we're going to have to work pretty quickly because some of these events have a timeline that they need to get advertisements out. There's a sixty thousand dollar media buy that the RV people need to get going so that they can get ready to go. So we're going to have to hopefully move expeditiously trying to get this done. If I work with Mr. Duke and can get the approval, he sent you his list for the Central District Health, no more than a hundred and twenty people in a twenty thousand square foot bay. That's very doable. And we're not here to fail, we're here to make you guys look good and do it right, so that's how I approach this.
Well, I, I, I think that's great.
Kendra, anything else that I need to, you've worked with these people we did the last time on the RV show?
I think what's.
Sorry, that was Commissioner Kendra.
What's in front of the board today then is, um, I would move to, uh, approve the agreement one four one two eight between us and Romeo Entertainment Group, noting that there is a, uh, caveat that there is a COVID addendum to that, um, that we can, uh, have Bob monitor and track. Um, what's the date on that one? That, that's just looking for the fair, right, to, for August, so we have plenty of time.
Yeah, that'd be August.
So I'd say let's approve that now.
Twenty three through twenty nine.
Yep, so I would say let's approve that now, so move to approve that. And then I'd like discussion, um, on the RV show that's not on the agenda, but I think we need to not make a motion, but a recommendation, whether Bob can move forward with that one or not.
Okay, is there, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now, we'll, we'll have a discussion on the, on the, this RV show, just a discussion. And, uh, and I think included in that discussion, we should have your work with, uh, Commissioner Davidson on some sort of communication with, uh, Central District Health.
Very much so, Commissioner.
I think it would be appropriate to include that in both, in one, both issues in one, in one motion.
And, and, uh, you know, probably wasn't the right place to bring it up, but I think it was, the timing was great that we could discuss this and try and incorporate these two issues into somewhat of a plan or process we're going to go forward with. Because these events are going to get better, you're probably going to get a letter from the people at the Roadster Show, these people, that's their business. And to go out of business two years in a row makes it difficult. You know, so, there you go, that's my case, I pleaded it.
So Chair.
All right.
Yeah, Chair, we, um, we approved this, uh, the prior board approved, um, it's Bischler, is it, uh, the RV show?
There's Bisch, yeah, the, all four, all, all four of these potential contracts come in before you have already been approved. We've just been waiting for them to submit it to Central District Health under the guidance of the, of the governor. Ten people can't do this show, but they're going to submit it with their guidelines of a hundred and twenty and extra cleaning and wider aisles and all that. And I believe that they probably will not approve it, but they'll say that you can go forward with it. That's what they're doing in Southwest District in Canyon County.
So did, did, um, Central District Health approve the RV show?
They have not, they've been waiting to bring that to you, they will send it in today and they'll see where they go.
Well, so.
I'm sorry?
If Southwest Health does not approve things, they just, what do they do?
I'm not sure I understand how they make that work, Commissioner Beck. Seriously, I don't.
Sounds like we're all living in the gray area.
That's the confusion that these folks from our district are having, that they're being allowed and they don't know how they're being allowed and we're being not allowed to do it.
Cause they're all putting it under the same governor's order, correct?
Yes. I, I think what the, there, the city, which is their governing body out at, uh, the, the Idaho Center is, is just saying, go for it, where, you know, because there's no really enforcing body that's going to stop it.
But they're all under, under the governor's order and they're all under, and they're under that, their, their district health over there.
That's correct. And so. That's as I understand it.
Yep, which is different than ours, so.
Yep.
Have you personally feared before the Central District Health in a public meeting to?
Central District came out when we canceled the fair and we've been working with Natasha and Russ Duke out there on regular event bases. Um, and then, and so they were the ones that were originally, we were going to do the Home and Garden Show, said there's no way this is going to happen. Reviewed the plan, sent folks out there to monitor us and we got flying colors that we did a great job. And we all participated in making sure this worked because they're as important to me as I am to them and vice versa.
But have you personally testified in an open, public meeting they've had?
No, I have not, sir. Cause generally speaking, we just rent the facility, the promoter, the promoter goes to the Central District Health for the approval.
So Chair?
Yes.
Um, so with that, I think what I'd be willing to do today is recommend that, uh, Director Batista go ahead and, um, proceed with the RV show if CDH gives it a stamp of approval, and that way we won't hold it up.
But I don't know if they will give the approval on the thing, but they'll review it and give us some guidelines.
Isn't that pretty much what they do in South, in Southwest, they just, they don't approve or deny, they just.
There you go.
These are the guidelines that we're looking at.
We're not going to prove it, so you don't, you don't have an official stamp on it.
Right, which I don't think they even have the authority to approve or deny, they have, they have authority to give guidelines, correct?
These are some of the differences we're playing with on two sides of the road that goes about ten miles out here.
Yeah, but I think we had an experience, a really good experience with this particular group.
With the RV show, yeah.
If they've got a path forward with CDH, I would say thumbs up, let it go.
Well, and the Home and Garden Show, you had a good.
The Home and Garden Show, not sure.
These next promoters that are coming up are quality people that have been doing events out here for fifty years or better. David Beal, I, I started this job at the same time he did and I'm wasting your time going on and on, but. It's an important issue for me, as you can probably tell.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'll just note real briefly, I think this, uh, from what you're describing about this, fits the status quo of where we are with the agreements that you have. Just because this wasn't agendized, I wouldn't recommend.
Yeah, we can do.
Action as a result of everything, but I don't think we're changing any conditions.
I understand that, but I think the timing to pick you back off of this, off the. Parks and Recs was perfect.
I agree with that, but we did, uh, we did approve the, uh, the.
Romeo Entertainment.
The Romeo Entertainment, and that's, and that's what was agendized, so the rest of this, uh, is, is just, uh, discussion. And you can work with Commissioner Davidson and Commissioner Canyon on, on some sort of communication to Southwest, to, to.
And to let you know, Commissioner Kendra, we will also work with them on their advertising, that they do the right advertising that they advise. There is COVID and everything instead of, and I will work with them to not overexaggerate the number of vehicles that they have on their advertising.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Sure. Sure.
I'd just like to make a note, for me, there's a difference between approving these businesses to be able to conduct their business in the appropriate fashion, where people can stick with the guidelines and stay safe, versus a wedding that Director Kolberg is dealing with, where that's a social gathering and people are dancing and drinking and eating and sharing, and they're super spreaders. And it's just, it's just.
They're two different events, certainly.
So with the letter, I just would caution you that if it has, doesn't have those separated, I'm probably not going to buy in on it, so.
Well, that's why I suggested that the three of you work together on the letter.
Yep.
We will not try and bring a quinceañera to you yet. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Uh, we have procurement with, with us for opening a bid, 21022.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Before you this morning, we have two openings under new business, and the first one is the opening of bid 21022. And that is the Ada County Jail Roof Section 7 and 8 for 2021. And we received four responses for this bid. And Jacob is going to queue up our bonfire e-procurement system up there. And if you're ready for us to go ahead and open, we'll proceed.
Proceed.
All right, Jacob, go ahead and open them up. So, Mr. Chair, what should open up here will be a bid table. Should be in Excel format. And Jacob's going to focus in on the area for you to read into the record the bidder's name and the bid amount.
Okay. Now, before they made the bid, you, you've al, you've already done your due diligence on the capability of the bidder to do the bid, and they've provided a bond and all that?
So, Mr. Chair, yes, they, they, we'll have to do some of that due diligence after the bids are read into the record and to see what they, all they've submitted. But we will do that to make sure they comply with our administrative requirements.
Well, and that they're capable of actually doing the work.
Now, interestingly enough, under political subdivision procurement laws, that's one thing we can't, we can't look at is, is, we can look at the responsiveness, but not the responsibility side of it, right?
But they do have a bond.
They, we're going to check that, make sure they have their bond.
Okay.
All right. So up there, Jacob's got the four bidders. And under each of the four bidders is their total bid amount. If you can reach, read both those into the record for us, please.
Okay. Well, we have the lowest is 445100, correct?
Yeah. So that's the low bid. And right next to that is the start of the bidder. So the first one being AAA, AAA roofing.
AAA roofing by Gene Incorporated, 526511. Nations Roof Mountain LLC for 445100. Signature Roofing, 488.
Yes, that's 480.
488. And Ups, Upsen Company for 5465. Okay, that's been read in the record.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll need just a little bit of time to evaluate these bids. And we'd like to request that the, it's be tabled for award recommendation on February 2nd, 2021.
I'll make the motion, Chair.
Okay.
Move to table the award bid number 21022, Ada County Jail Roof Section 7 and 8, 2021 to February 2nd, correct?
Yes.
2021.
Okay, do we have a, a motion, or a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you again.
Yes, we, we have one more.
One more, right now.
Oh, we do? Oh, yeah, we do.
We'll get rid of that easy.
Excuse me.
This is important.
Yeah. All the recorders, oh, wow. Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Our second opening that we have in progress this morning is RFP 21025, Ada County Recorder's Office Imaging Project 2021. And we received three proposals for this. And Robin's going to go ahead and queue up our bonfire e-procurement system up there. And if you're ready for us to proceed to open those proposals, we'll have her go ahead and do that.
We're ready to proceed.
All right, Robin, go ahead and open them up. So, Mr. Chair, as Robin's opening these up, these are, this is an RFP, so for this morning, we're just asking you to read into the record just the name of the proposers.
Okay.
We have the three proposers up there under the supplier header there. If you'd like to read each of those into the record.
Could you read them in the record?
I'd love to. So, starting with number one up there, Integra Paperless Business Solutions. The second supplier is Paperless Digital Solutions. And the third is US Imaging. And, Mr. Chair, the evaluation team will need some time to evaluate these proposals. And we would like to request this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the February 9th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
Thank you, Bob. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Yes, Chair. I move to table the final rankings and award recommendations for RFP 21025, Ada County Recorder's Office Imaging Project 2021 to February 9th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Could you summarize what the project is, on the imaging?
Yeah, I could, I could, I could do that, but I think either Clerk McGrane or Heather Luther up there on the, on the web S could do a better job.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this is, this is one of like the least sexy projects that we have in the county. So the county recorder is responsible for keeping track of all the recorded records going back even pre-statehood, right? So you can go do research, find a property. Over time, we need to retain those in different formats, right? And so we have some records that we need to convert to the current digital format. Most of them now are submitted digitally, and that's how our recording system is. But there's a large volume of documents that we need to convert in order to be able to retain the historic records.
I assume that's what it was.
Yep. Like I said, not exciting, but it's really important because my predecessors have kept these records. I feel an equal obligation to keep them for history. And surprisingly, people refer to them much more frequently than we'd ever realized.
Okay. You for the motion. Is there more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you. We will be in recess for about five, 10 minutes, and we'll take back up the emergency medical district. Good recess.